Good evening and welcome to the organizational meeting of the ISD 728 School Board. Tonight is Monday, January 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. I am going to begin by turning it over to Dr. Bitman, so we can swear in the new board members. Welcome.
Vice Chair Thompson, members of the board. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you are assuming a tremendous amount of responsibility as a director of our school district with duties and power to you by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of the school board in a position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in ISD 728. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for our public schools in ISD 728. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as the education's key advocate on behalf of children and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision that we have created, fostering excellence for each and every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenships, and personal development. Later in this meeting, you will actually sign the oath, which we will keep on hand, which those of you who have been part of the board will have done. And in a moment, we'll start and say the affirmation together, which will start with "I affirm." So the three board members that were just elected will say in unison at the same time now. I affirm that I will support-
The Constitution of the United States-
And of this state-
And that I will discharge faithfully- The duties of the office of school board member- Of independent school district number 728- To the best of my judgment and ability. As a board member, I also pledge to follow all board-approved policies, including policy 209, code of conduct- As well as state and federal statute.
With that, let me be the first to welcome you and thank you for serving on the board of ISD 728.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number three, the organization of the board. And first up is item A, election of officers. At this time, the board organization is disbanded, and I am filling in this evening for Chair Steinbrecker. We will conduct the business of election of a chair. So I will open it up for nominations for the position of chair.
I nominate Vice Chair Thompson for board chair.
There's a nomination for Vice Chair Thompson to be elected as chair of the board. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? So I will close the nominations. And I, um, there has been a motion that has been made. It has been seconded, and then we will take a vote. So, um, there is a motion and a second for Vice Chair Thompson to step in to be elected to the board chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, and Vice Chair Thompson now becomes Board Chair Thompson. So, thank you all. I appreciate the vote of confidence, and I am looking forward to serving in this capacity in the next year. We will now open it up to the election of the vice chair. Do I have a nomination for the vice chair?
I nominate Director Michaels for vice chair.
There is a nomination for Director Michaels for vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Second.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry Director Nelson. I did the first one, I was a little-
Oh, okay.
I'll catch it here in a second. And finally, for the third time, are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing no other nominations, I will close the nominations. There is a motion on the table to elect Director Michaels to the vice chair. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Wonderful, thank you. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Vice Chair Michaels. Uh, we will move on to item number two, the clerk and treasurer. It's been recommended the school board combine the offices of clerk treasurer to one, and treasurer to one position. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? There's a motion and a second to combine the office of clerk and treasurer to one position. Any discussion on the topic? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. It's been recommended that the school board combine the offices of clerk and treasurer to one position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item two. Recommend the school board appoint Ms. Kim Eisenshank, Executive Director of Business Services, to the office of clerk treasurer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question that it has been recommended the school board appoint Ms. Kim Eisenshank, Executive Director of Business Services, to the office of clerk treasurer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Eisenshank, for serving in that capacity. We will move on to item four, other organizational business. The board meeting schedule. It's been recommended the school board approve the board meeting schedule for January 2021 through the end of the 2122 school year as attached. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing any, I'll call a question that it's been recommended the school board approve the board meeting schedule from January 2021 through the end of the 2122 school year as attached. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item B, our committee assignments. I will review these quickly. The, um, number one, we have the Minnesota State High School League Representative will continue to be Director Weiss. The superintendent evaluation committee will be myself, Director Nelson, and Director Walter. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Board, that will be Director Tulbane. The project oversight team will be Director, or Vice Chair Michaels and Director Weiss. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts will be Director Steinbrecker. And the board scholarship committee will be Director Nelson, myself, and it looks like we will either have Director Tulbane or Director Walter. Wonderful. Thank you all for willing to serve in those committees. They're important, and we appreciate it. Item C, the official newspaper of the school district. It's been recommended the school district designate the Elk River Star News as the official newspaper for legal purposes. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. It has been recommended the school board designate Elk River Star News as the official newspaper for legal purposes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item D, the official depository. It's been recommended the school board designate the following official depositories for legal purposes. The Bank of Elk River for checking savings and investments. US Bank Minneapolis for investments and savings. MSDLAF, managed by PFM, for liquid asset fund. PMA Financial Network, Inc., for investments. US Bank, managed by PFM, for investments, for OPEB. Bremer Bank, for ACH for payroll. And Wealth Management, US Bank Corp. Investments, for scholarship investments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question that it's recommended the school board designate the following official depositories as previously stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item E, a resolution regarding the authority to purchase, lease, and contract for goods and services. It's recommended the school board adopt the resolution regarding the authority to purchase, lease, and contract for goods and services as follow. Be it resolved that the superintendent, the executive director of business services, and the assistant superintendents of educational services be delegated authority to purchase, lease, or contract for goods and services in the name of independent school district 728 Sherburne County, Elk River, Minnesota, within the budget as approved by the board, provided that any transactions in the amount exceeding the minimum amount for which bids are required must first be specifically authorized by the board and must fulfill all other applicable requirements in section 123B dot 52. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. It's been recommended the school board adopt the resolution regarding the authority to purchase, lease, and contract goods for services, for goods and services as stated previously. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item F for check signing. It's been recommended the school board authorize Shane Steinbrecker and Kristy Tulbane to be the signatories for all district checks for the period beginning January 1st, and until a new stamp is prepared with the new officers' names if necessary. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. It's been recommended the school board authorize Shane Steinbrecker and Kristy Tulbane to be the signatories for all checks for the period beginning January 1st until a new stamp is prepared with new officers' names if necessary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item J, records retention schedule. It's been recommended the school board adopt the Minnesota Records Retention Schedule for school districts as a guide for preserving records with administrative, legal, fiscal, and historical value, and to dispose of records that no longer have value. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. It's been recommended the school board adopt the Minnesota Records Retention Schedule for school districts as a guide for preserving records with administrative, legal, fiscal, and historical value, and to dispose of records that no longer have value. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item J, or H, I'm sorry. Electronic funds transfer. Recommend the school district designate the following staff as official staff with authority to make electronic fund transfers on behalf of ISD 728 Elk River for the calendar year 2021. Assistant Director of Finance and District Accountant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question that it was recommended the school board designate following staff as official staff with authority to make electronic fund transfers on behalf of ISD 728 Elk River for the calendar year 2021. Assistant Director of Finance and District Accountant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item A, legal counsel. Item I, I'm sorry. It's been recommended the school board designate Rupp Anderson Squire and Walzberger, PA to serve as legal counsel for ISD 728, and to authorize the following individuals to contact legal counsel. The superintendent of schools, assistant superintendent of educational services for elementary, assistant superintendent of educational services for secondary, executive director of human resources, executive director of business services, and assistant director of human resources. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. It's been recommended the school board designate Rupp Anderson Squire and Walzberger, PA to serve as legal counsel for ISD 728, and to authorize the following individuals to contact legal counsel as stated previously. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item J. And this is a topic here where we talk about board, school board compensation. This is something that our compensation has been the same since 2002, and we bring it up usually at a time when we have our organizational meeting if there's any conversation about wanting to change the compensation for school board members. Then it looks like we will continue to keep it the way we have since 2002. At this point, I will adjourn the meeting. I will take a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and we have concluded our organizational meeting. Are we ready to move to the, perfect, wonderful. So good evening again, and welcome to our regular meeting of the ISD 728 School Board. Tonight, it's Monday, January 11th, 2021, and we just concluded our organizational meeting, so we will open up our regular meeting of the school board. And I would like to begin by having everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will, um, probably a good time at the beginning of the year to review our protocol reminders. That anyone that wishes to address the board during open forum is asked to complete a card, which is available on the table, and turn it in to Ms. Londa Chambers prior to the start of open forum. The board has set aside up to 20 minutes for this purpose, and asks that each individual limits his or her comments to three minutes. If there are more than three individuals wishing to speak about the same topic, the board respectfully asks that participants, for participants to identify three individuals to speak on behalf of the group and to submit the remaining comments in writing. In addition, one copy of the printed materials related to the agenda items of the meeting are available for review in the three-ring binder on the table if needed. All materials are also available online at ISD728.org. Board members, we are also asked to follow the agreed-upon protocols. That we have no sidebar discussions, no interruptions, that we state our concerns, ensure that we, that you understand, not to take things personally, adhere to time limits, come prepared, and ensure that all are heard. And finally, item C, read our statement of core values. We believe that all people have value, that valuing and respecting differences strengthens the individual and the community. People thrive when they feel connected, supported, and affirmed. Everyone can learn. Hope inspires and empowers. Lifelong learning is essential for personal growth, and change is an opportunity for growth. We will move on to item D, and given approval of the agenda, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any conversation or any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take it to a vote. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and we will move on to general reports. And tonight, we have Dr. Bitman here with us with the superintendent's report. Welcome, Dr. Bitman.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I will give a brief report, and then I will hand it over both to the assistant superintendent of elementary and the assistant superintendent of secondary to provide a little bit of an update. But each January, school districts across the nation welcome school board members, either new or veteran, to a four-year term of service. And unless you have served in the role as a board member, you do not know the amount of time and energy that one puts into it. Serving takes great courage, commitment, and stamina. Serving a second or a third term takes even more. On behalf of the school district and surrounding communities, I want to thank Directors Nelson, Director Thompson, and Director Tulbane for their willingness to serve another term and for being part of this great organization. In addition, I want to thank Chair Steinbrecker, Chair, Vice Chair Thompson, and Director Tulbane for their service in officer positions throughout this last year. Tonight, the school board also elected a chair in Madam Thompson, so thank you, as well as a vice chair in Madam, uh, excuse me, right, reading and talking at the same time, Madam Michaels, which I appreciate serving in that role. We also combine the clerk and the treasurer positions, which is common throughout Minnesota. Current statute does not allow a board member to serve in that combined role, so I wanted to answer that for our public that might be wondering why that is. Our current statute does not allow that. And so that is why we have a district representative and someone an executive director, Eisenshank, for that position. Unfortunately for Ms. Eisenshank, she will not have any voting rights on the board and will not be compensated financially for her role. But she will be able to add it to her resume, even though we plan to keep her forever and always. In a second report, just some COVID-19-related information for the board and for the public. We remain committed to bringing students back to school when we are able to do so, when it is safe to do so, and when it can be sustainable. That is important as we continue to move forward. Early childhood and elementary-age students will be returning or beginning to return to school in person next week per the governor's executive order, which includes a phased-in approach. Certain middle and high school students will also begin returning to school in a phased-type-in approach, as we had talked about previously, and based on immediate need. Current parameters from the Department of Ed and the Department of Health do not allow all middle school and high school students to come back to school. So the current parameters do not allow that. As much as we would like to, they do not allow it. It's very different at the secondary level than it is elementary. And we will continue to meet with health professionals in all five of our counties and the Department of Health, and we will once again meet with them at the end of this month in hope to get permission to bring more and more students back at the secondary level. Vaccinations are also expected to be available for some staff, which is determined by the county and the state. So again, the school district does not get to decide how many vaccinations they have access to or who gets them. That is determined at a different level than the school district. But we have been told that we expect vaccinations for some by the end of February or sometime in March. In addition to that, voluntary saliva testing for COVID-19 will become available for some staff. Again, that too is determined by the Department of Education. So again, the school district doesn't get to decide how many a school district gets or when. Ours will be every other Thursday for certain staff members. Again, the Department of Education chooses that. Lack of staffing will continue to be the most challenging issue, not only in ISD 728, but for all Minnesota school districts. When an individual is determined to be in close contact or they test positive, they must quarantine. You may remember that when ISD 728 needed to go to a distance learning model, it was because we had, for example, on any given day, more than 100 staff members out for COVID-related reasons and only about 20 to 30% fill rate for substitutes. So we did not have sufficient staff or adults to drive a bus, to serve a meal, to educate a student in a classroom, et cetera. So again, staffing is going to be the most challenging thing, and we'll continue to work hard to do that. Please, this is a plea to the public, not to the board necessarily, but you can join along to, please continue to help us, not only to get our students back in school, but to keep them in school. One of the questions I'm asked most frequently is what can we do? We can wash our hands, we can wear a face covering, we can become a substitute and substitute in the district continuously or consistently, and we can also practice social distancing. The more that we can do that, the better chance we can get our kids back, the sooner we can get them back, and the more likely we will be to keep them in school. So again, we're excited to have some of our kids back, and we look forward to the future. With that, I will turn it over to our educational assistant superintendent of elementary, Mr. Will Campbell.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Thompson. Congratulations, as well as other members of the board, and thank you, Dr. Bitman, for the opportunity. And again, it is an honor to serve in this district in this capacity with such great professionals. We are excited that kids are coming back to school next Tuesday. Based on the guidance, we are allowed to bring back three grade bands at a time. So next Tuesday, our kindergarten through second grade students will be returning. That means for Zimmerman Elementary, all of their students will be returning. And then for Westwood, because they are a 3-5 school, all of their students will be returning next Tuesday as well. So we are excited about those students returning. And then, of course, on February 1st, two days before my birthday, free advertisement, that we'll be bringing back our third through fifth graders throughout our district, and we are excited about that. And of course, with bringing students back, there are other things we are keeping in mind as we bring them back. You have heard the words cohorts going around a lot. And so one of the things that we're going to focus on is keeping the students in a cohort, meaning if I'm a third-grade teacher, I'm going to try to keep my third graders together as much as possible. And then when I have my kids have to go to like some specialist classes and so forth, we have other parameters in place to keep those young people safe. And then also, when they go to specialist, specialist classes, we're able to do a variety of things because of the complexity of the different infrastructures and different buildings and space. The principals are working with their teams to be able to work within those parameters. And then also lunch. We still have to feed young people. And so we will have a combination of young people eating in the classrooms as well as eating in the cafeteria with the social distancing in mind as well. And so we are excited to bring kids back. Great team of people, and again, it's an honor to be, to serve and to bring young people back. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Dan Bur for our secondary report.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair Thompson and members of the board, and Dr. Dan Bitman. So tonight, I give you a report about secondary students. It's a start. It's not exactly where we want to be at this moment in time, but it is a start. And so we are bringing back students for the last two weeks, January 19th through January 28th, and it's an intervention approach. And so many of these students, they're students who may not be engaged, not showing up for their daily coursework or their check-ins. They may be students with severe mental health, with anxiety, depression, or they're struggling academically. So we will continue to monitor our county numbers, as Dr. Bitman had said. Our hope and our desire truly is to get our students back full-time. That's really what we would love. But right now, we're not able to do that. I think a next step would be awesome if our numbers uphold is that we bring our students back in a hybrid model. And, but again, we want to make sure that the numbers are there, COVID rates are down, and that we can sustain it. The last thing we want to do is bring our students back for a week and then send them back. So that is our goal. But we are excited to start baby steps, and away we go. So thank you.
Thank you. I would say, by half the board, we all appreciate all the efforts that are going to make sure that we're getting as many students as we can back safely and taking the necessary steps to make sure that everyone's safe. But I know there's a lot of families that will be very happy to have their students go back to school. So thank you. We will move on to item B for school board member reports. And we will start this evening with the project oversight committee. We have Vice Chair Michaels here with the report.
Thank you. Doctor, our Director Weiss and I represent the board on the project oversight committee. This is a summary of our January 7th meeting. We reviewed the referendum projects. All are on schedule and within the budget parameters. Prairie View Middle School now has some walls going up and is progressing very nicely. We are starting to change our focus now on the stadium work at the three traditional high schools. Elk River, the designs have been submitted to the city for review, which includes multi-purpose field, bleachers, stadium entrances, restrooms, and the entrance. And bids are expected to go out at the end of the month. In both Zimmerman- In both Zimmerman and Rogers, the work will continue. There will be two phases to make sure we get all the core standards in both locations. And the multi-purpose field is still expected to be built and complete prior to the 2021, 2022 school year. Vanderburg Middle School is in the process of user groups and is close to complete. The project is expected to occur in 2022. The Handkey Family Center will have some phased work with some work in 2021 and 22, and the most significant portion of it in 22, 23. The project at Lincoln remained in the initial planning phases, and more information is expected in February and March. And the LTFM projects across the district are continuing to happen consistent with the plan and all of the referendum promises. As always, we invite you to visit IST728.org/728strong with all of the project information. There's some photos and some drawings and renderings of all the projects, so, and timelines as well for all the projects. So we invite you to go out there and take a look.
Wonderful, thank you. Any comments, questions for Vice Chair Michaels? Wonderful, thank you for the report. I do have, I guess I should say, does anyone else have any other school board member reports? No? I do have a statement here that I'd like to read on behalf of former Chair Steinbrecker. He writes, "Dr. Bitman, members of the board, I am unable to join you in person tonight due to a personal commitment, but look forward to joining you at the next meeting. I wanted to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to serve as board chair and for your continued faith each of you have had in me. It has been an honor serving in that capacity, and I'm, and I am excited to see Chair Thompson and Vice Chair Michaels serve in their new roles. Our students, staff, and district will be in good hands. Please know I will continue to be actively engaged, equally as passionate, and ready and willing to assist in any way and at any time needed. Again, thank you for the opportunity to serve in that capacity. I am a better person because of it." So, and then for the record, I would also like to thank Shane Steinbrecker for his service as our board chair. It's been over four years. He's done an excellent job. His leadership has definitely made us better. So I appreciate everything that he's done and look forward to continue working with him. We will move on to item C, the school, the student representative reports. And this evening, we have two representatives, the first from Elk River High School, Lexi Millis. Welcome.
Thank you for having me tonight. I thought I would start with athletics at Elk River High School. So as of January fourth last Monday, all winter sports were able to resume, which was very exciting after the pause that we were on. I know a lot of students were just excited to be back and socializing, whether it's social distancing but still socializing. I know we were all really excited to be back. As with the announcement from Governor Walz, some sports are going to be able to start having spectators, given the amount of capacity and space that some facilities have. So, for example, at Elk River, sports such as hockey and basketball, they will be able to have, of course, limited spectators, but still spectators nonetheless, whereas sports with smaller facilities such as swimming and gymnastics, unfortunately, just do not have the space to host spectators, so they will continue without spectators. For all sports except for gymnastics, games are due to start on Thursday, I believe. These games are just one team against one other team, no scrimmages or tournaments due to COVID guidelines. All sports are required to wear masks while practicing, and for most, and if not all, they are required to wear masks while playing and/or competing. Yeah, so I thought I would just share a little bit of my perspective. I am on the Elk River gymnastics team. Obviously, things are very different this year. I didn't expect to have my senior year with a mask on the entire time, but I'm just overall happy that I get to spend it with my teammates. I'm happy that we even get a season. I know I'm very fortunate where some other sports may not have been as fortunate. It's really weird because I'm usually like, kind of like the loud one at practice and smiling a lot, and this year, like, no one needs to see me smile. So that's just a little different, but other than that, like I said, I'm just really thankful that we get the chance to practice and just all be together, especially for my last year here at the high school. Moving on from athletics, fine arts are actually able to start as well. We have what we call One Act has started virtually, of course. They just wrapped up auditions and they're moving on to practices and, as far as, I know, the, I haven't heard about competitions, but I'm assuming that if they are able to have those, they will be virtually. Speech has also resumed. Their first meet is in a few weeks, so we look forward to see, seeing what our amazing speech team is able to accomplish this year. Also, as with the integrated learning approach for secondary schools, the mid-year learning camp will resume January nineteenth to help students struggling with certain credits. I know this is going to be especially important this year for seniors that might be struggling with distance learning, they might be falling behind on a few important credits they need to graduate. So I know that a lot of teachers are looking forward to being able to help their students as much as possible. And lastly, the high school semester at least is coming to a wrap. This is my last first semester at the Elk River High School, so it's kind of bittersweet for me. Overall, it's, it, it wasn't what I expected for my senior year, but I don't think anyone really expected this year to turn out the way it did. So I'm just happy that I still have access to school. There have obviously been ups and downs, managing really bad Wi-Fi connections, like lagging, just different, different little struggles that we've all had to deal with with Google Meet, but I'm really excited to see what the end of the year brings. Really, really hopeful for being able to return to school. It'll be my first time, if we do get to go back, it'll be my first time in school since March of 2020. So, yeah, just looking forward to what the new year brings, and hopefully it'll be all good things.
Wonderful, thank you, Lexi. Any questions or comments for her? Thank you for your update, I appreciate it. Ms. Chambers, do we have anybody else out in the audience or out on that? Okay, so it looks like we may not have our other representative this evening. Lexi, you are welcome to join and stay with us for the rest of the meeting. If you have somewhere you need to be, or if you have homework you need to do, you are welcome to leave as well. Thank you. We are going to move to item D, recognition, and these are the Student Leadership Awards, and I will turn it over to Dr. Bitman.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll ask our assistant superintendents to come up, but it is the time that we most look forward to at every board meeting, where we can celebrate our amazing students and the accomplishments that they've had. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair Thompson and members of the board, and thank you again for the opportunity, Dr. Bitman, an opportunity we have to honor some students who, who deserve recognition. The first student is Megan Hinesman. Megan is a student at Twin Lakes Elementary, and this is what they say about Megan. Megan has built up her toolbox to conquer anything that may come her way. From kindergarten on, she has rocked school with her outstanding work ethic, determination, and never-give-up attitude. Megan has gained so much confidence along the way that she has really made herself into a wonderful student. This has also led her to become so much stronger with her independence. We're very proud of Megan, and she brings a smile to the face, to, to people's faces, knowing how far she has come, as well as how far that we think she'll go. Her path at Twin Lakes has been successful, and we can clearly see her magnificent future ahead. So congratulations to Megan Hinesman. Congratulations, Megan. Next student is a student at Prairie View Elementary School, Emily Perez. Emily is a fifth grader, and she is a positive, caring, determined, and hard-working student. She shows passion in her schoolwork and has courage to try new things. Emily is helpful and encouraging to her peers. She's a quiet leader and always stays focused on daily tasks. She treats others with respect while carrying out herself in a positive manner. So congratulations to Emily Perez. Finally, another fifth-grade student, Lincoln Miller. Lincoln exemplifies what it means to be a respectful and kind friend. He leads those around him with creativity and perseverance. His positive and helpful attributes are a great example of what we expect and hope from our Prairie View students. Lincoln has continued to be an outstanding student during virtual learning and helpful to others via Google Chat. Lincoln shows amazing character and at such a young age, and he is doing great things. So congratulations to Lincoln Miller and family.
At this time, we will bring up Dr. Hanen Burr to recognize a couple of our secondary students.
Again, greetings, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Bitman. So this is always the fun part of the meeting. So these two students hail from Prairie View Middle School. And so we'll start with eighth grader Madeline Drubecky. Maddie is an outstanding student. She is a very hard worker and makes sure she is ready and prepared each and every day. She is kind, she's polite, and a refreshing part of our day. She always has a can-do attitude and strives to increase her knowledge. Maddie's bubbly personality allows for her to exude the charisma of a few in her grade. Maddie is also a very gifted art student and an amazing and talented singer. Maddie is and will continue to be an outstanding student. Congrats, Maddie. And finally, we have also Wyatt McLean. He's an eighth grader as well. And so when we asked staff members at Prairie View to explain Wyatt, one comment really surfaced, Wyatt is going to change the world one day. Wyatt has an unwavering desire to be an engineer when he graduates from college, and he takes ownership of his education to keep that goal near the forefront. He admits when he makes a mistake and then takes opportunity to learn from it. Wyatt has been a great leader and an excellent role model for all the other students to follow. We are confident that Wyatt will continue on the path to greatness. Congrats, Wyatt.
And again, this is the most, the best part for me in the meeting, is being able to recognize our students. Hopefully, we'll be able to do it in person again soon. We will move on to item, to public comment. Ms. Chambers, were there any red cards this evening? Thank you. We will move on then to governance and community, item A, policies. There's a first reading of policies. Seven zero nine, student transportation safety, seven ten, extracurricular transportation, and seven eleven, video recording on school buses. We will be asked to approve these policies at the January twenty-fifth meeting, regular meeting. If the board has any questions, please forward them to Dr. Bitman and myself between now and the twenty-fifth. Item two, we have policies that are the second reading and for approval. It's been recommended the school board approve the following policies as part of the annual review cycle. Policy seven zero four, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system. Seven zero five, investments, and seven zero eight, transportation on non-public, on non-public school students. Do you have a motion?
Sobbed.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions about the policies? If Dr. Bitman is here and available to answer any questions. Hearing none, we'll call a question. It's been recommended the school board approve the following policies as part of the annual review cycle as previously stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to finance. Item A is a resolution relating to sale of general obligation facilities maintenance bonds. It's been recommended the school board approve the resolution relating to general obligation facilities maintenance bond series two zero two one A, authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing the payment thereof as attached. Do I have a motion?
Sobbed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and this evening, we have Ms. Kim Eisenshank, the Executive Director of Business Services, and Ms. Jody Zesba, Senior Municipal Advisor for Ellers Public Finance Advisors, who will present the bond sale data and resolution. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair Thompson and Board members. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to bring this information to you, and this is part of our long-term facility maintenance plan that we've had with the district, and we're continuing to move down that plan and address issues and upgrades across the district. So it's exciting times. And so, as you mentioned, Jody Zesba is here with me, and she's from Ellers, our financial advisor, and she's going to talk through how the bond sale went today. And, and as an attachment in your agenda is the sale day report, and that's what she's going to go through. So I'll turn it over to Jody.
Thank you, Kim, and good evening. She didn't steal any thunder. It is really excellent news, so I'm very excited to be here tonight to share that news with you. So we'll walk through the sale day report, and I'll just highlight a few things, but we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have also. So these are bonds, as Kim mentioned, that we're issuing for your long-term facilities maintenance program. Your projects in this program are financed by three sources of funds. So you have annual levies that are approved as part of your levy process, bond proceeds, and you get quite a bit of state aid towards these projects. So we monitor those components and try to do our best to keep your tax rate as level as possible unless the voters approve an increase in your taxes. And in this past year, you did have a little reduction in your tax levy for Taxes Payable 21 related to your outstanding debt service and capital levy. So we can look at that in a little bit on one of the schedules, too. So first of all, you did have your Minnesota Credit Enhanced Rating assigned to these bonds, which is a rating that you get automatically by participating in the State Credit Enhancement Program. There's no cost to participate in that program, and they guarantee the payment of your debt. So the investors like to see that, and the bond rating agency assigns you a nice double A two, which is a great high rating under that program. Your underlying rating was affirmed at a double A three, which is also a nice high rating. And I should mention that Dr. Bitman and Kim and Joe Premus from the Finance Department participated in a call with the rating agency, provided a lot of information, answered a lot of questions, represented you very well. So that is a really, really big part of the process, and they did an awesome job in helping to affirm that nice high double A three rating, I should say. So you've got eight bids today, which was great to see. We like to see at least three, so seeing eight bids was great. And that low bid rate is not a typo, one point seven eight percent. So we had planned on two point five percent in our pre-sale estimates that I presented with you virtually at the end of November, and with this nice low rate, you'll see in our notes at the bottom of the page there, the savings as compared to our pre-sale estimates in terms of principal and interest payments is one point six million less than what we had projected. So that's how much of a difference that a nice low interest rate means. We have some attachments to the pre, the sale day report that I'll go through with you. The first is the bid tab. So this is the list of bidders that bid on your bonds today, and you'll see Northland Securities was the underwriter that provided the low bid, but Midwest One Bank locally here at Elk River participated with them on that bid. So we just wanted to recognize that, too, because they were participating. So it's nice to have a local bank. Northland Securities is a local company, but to have that local bank participating in the bid also is. Northland Securities is a local company, but to have that local bank participating in the bid also is fantastic. So then you'll see a number of bids, all lower than what we were expecting. So Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, Texas was the night, the next lowest bidder at about a 1.81. And then you'll see bids from throughout the country. So Nashville, Tennessee, and other Minneapolis, Oklahoma City, a couple from New York, and Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And the high bidder was at about a 1.96, so all of them less than 2%, which was fantastic. The next schedules then are just updates to the pre-sale schedules that we talked about in November. So these now have the sale results in. We were expecting a large premium and we did not get a large premium. So they happened to give us a discount bid, so we did, instead of reducing the bond size, we did issue the full amount that the board authorized at the 16,350 and at a 1.78%. We're happy to, happy to do that. So otherwise, all of the numbers on this page are pretty consistent. The capitalized interest was quite a bit lower because those rates were so much lower and the amount available for project costs is just a little bit higher than what we were expecting. The next schedule is the detailed debt service schedule. The most important number is in the yield statistics at the bottom, that true interest cost rate at the 2.78, I'm sorry, 1.78 that we talked about earlier. And then we have this nice detailed debt plan that we put together and this is where all the magic happens. So we're doing our best again to take a look at the financing of your existing bonds through voter-approved bonds, through this program, your OPEB bonds. We're looking at all of your existing debt, your lease levies, so really more broadly, that all of your debt and capital levies. And then on the far right-hand side, we're monitoring that tax rate. And you can also see, this is the page where you'll see the state aid that you get in this program, which is around $2 million annually, so pretty substantial. Lots of districts do not qualify for aid in this program, but Elk River does. So on the next page, you can see a little bit better than how we are trying to keep the tax rate nice and level. Again, we have a little step down between taxes payable in 20 and taxes payable in 21. And then we're anticipating that being nice and level with a couple of step downs in the future. And because of this nice low rate, we just have a little bit lower step down in future years than we had planned on. So good to have that happen too. And then you had two reports that were issued by the rating agency on your behalf. So the first one is a press release that they sent out and you'll see some overall information related to the rating that they assigned. Outlook about what, what could lead to an upgrade in the future, what could lead to a downgrade because they monitor your financial condition, your economic condition throughout the district, your socioeconomic indicators, all the things that they base their rating on. They continue to monitor while your bonds are outstanding. So that rating can change from time to time and they're just giving you an indication as to what might lead to a change. And then finally, they issue a more detailed credit opinion. That will look pretty detailed already, I know, but there is a little bit more explanation and background information provided in this. And they're mentioning credit strengths and credit challenges as part of this. They provide some key indicators, some historic information, and then some more detailed explanation on the different criteria that they're basing their rating on. And then finally, a scorecard. And what we are looking at at the bottom of that scorecard is the scorecard indicated outcome is a AA2, which is a notch above what you have right now. So of course, we ask, well, what gets us to that then? Because it looks like you're kind of leaning toward that rating category. And they're looking for, although you have a lot of improvement in your financial condition, they still feel like other districts with that AA2 have a little bit higher reserve or fund balance levels. So as they look at everything in totality, they just felt most comfortable in the AA3 rating at this point in time. And I should also say that they're, they haven't been making any change, any, many changes during COVID, just because there's so much uncertainty. So unless they have a really strong rationale for changing things upward or downward, they've been trying to kind of keep things at the level that they're at because of all the uncertainty involved. So that is everything that is included in the sale day report. Again, we are just thrilled with the results and very happy to be able to report on that nice low interest rate and the reduction in taxes that it will be compared to what we had been projecting when we put those schedules together at the end of November.
Any questions or comments from the board? Alrighty, then we will move forward. I have a motion on the table. It's been recommended the school board approve the resolutions relating to the general obligation facilities maintenance bond series 2021A, authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing the payment thereof as attached. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much for all of your efforts and making, that was such great news to see that today, so.
I just have one form that I'll have a couple of you sign.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eisenshank as well. I know it takes a lot of time and energy to, to pull all this together, so. Thank you. Okay, we are going to go to the consent agenda, agenda. Is there anything anyone would like pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Looks like we have many upcoming dates of importance. If the board would like to review those, it takes us through the end of April. And then I will take a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Perfect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much and everyone have a lovely evening. Thank you.